All right, good evening. I would like to call the January 15, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I don't believe I have any announcements. Am I assuming that there's something that I'm going to find questionable on the agenda this evening? Suzanne?
A minor type of...
Yep, I'm gonna let you find it.
Oh, that's always so much more fun when I find it. All right. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently on our posted agenda? Seeing as none, we will move directly into our first item, which is the Outstanding Citizenship Award and Best Voting Community. Chris, if you could, I believe you have some folks with you, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up?
I can move over. I can move down a little. So, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Lisa Postman, my administrative assistant. We have Andrea Potez, she's one of my registrars. We have Senator Lou Bertinazzi and, I'm sorry...
Dr. Di Gregorio.
Um, Di Gregorio. I'll let Senator Bertinazzi explain the whole citizenship award.
Sure. When I retired from the Senate, some 20 years ago...
Doesn't seem that long, right?
Yeah. It does when I look around and I don't know a single member of the Board of Selectmen.
Senator, where were you as Senator? Forgive me.
I'm sorry?
Where were you as Senator?
Right here.
So prior to Senator Moore?
This district. Prior to Senator Moore.
Okay, just for context.
I was the Senator for 17 years. 10 years before that, I was in the House. When I did retire, I decided to establish a foundation. I was interested in three areas: education, culture, and civic duty. The board that we established, of which Dr. Di Gregorio is the chairman, sat down and we laid out an entire program. Under education, we have for 20 years now, since 1998, every year we've given $1,000 to an outstanding teacher in the Milford system. That was the system that we went through school in and we were happy to be able to do something to show appreciation for the teachers in our system. Under the cultural award, for all those years, we have sent a student with at least a B-plus average for at least three years in the study of the Italian language. We've sent that student to Italy to study for the summer for six weeks in a program that first, for the first number of years, SUNY ran the program, State University of New York, in Rome. And then they decided that we were not from New York and therefore we should, we were wrong in paying in-state tuition. Consequently, they raised our tuition to the point where we couldn't afford it. However, just coincidentally, fortunately, Pittsburgh State started a program in Italy at that point. And so now, for the last number of years, every year, we send, in cooperation now, the last few years with the Milford large sons of Italy, we send the student to Italy to study in that program. They get college credits, so whatever school they're going to, the credits that they earn during that summer in Italy can be established at their own school. And under civic, we went around for a while on that. It took us a little bit longer to decide how to do it. And we decided that one of the most important things is that so many people gave up, sacrificed so much to maintain the rights of American citizens to vote. A lot of lives were given, a great deal was done by all of these people, and we tried to come up with something that might be just a little incentive, a little spur, if you We've always been competitive, so we thought, you know, it'd be a good thing if we could get these towns to begin to compete with one another, the way they do in football or baseball. And so we decided, the problem that we had was the varying sizes of the towns. But we solved that. What we do is, we take the local election for the even year, and then the local election for the odd year, and then the primary and the state election following that. In the years that there is a presidential primary, we include that as well. And we take the number of people who are registered to vote in each town, and the percentage of those people who are registered to vote, who actually come out to vote, is the criteria that we use. That way, whether it's a big town or a small town, everybody has an equal shot at it. We have, it's interesting, now, every town that I represented in the House and in the Senate, 19 towns are involved in this. And the interesting thing is, although my district ran from Milford up to Sturbridge, the winners, coincidentally, have all been in this portion of the district. This is the closest that we've come to the middle of the district with the win by Douglas. We had Northbridge won twice, Upton won twice, Mendon won once, and I forgot, and Sutton was the very first winner. So that was one that was on the other side. So now, what we do is, we present the town clerk and the Board of Registrars, who are chiefly responsible for the elections, with a check for $1,000 to be spent any way that they see fit to improve even further the number of people who come out to vote in the next election. So that will be the first presentation that I'll make. To you and the Board of Registrars, check for $1,000.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next thing is a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. Because after all, the town clerk alone isn't the one who can bring out voters. Each of you can and has to, in order to maintain your position. So, every two years, we add to this plaque a single item naming the town that won. So we have from Sutton on down to Douglas, and I'd like to present this to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's nice.
Thanks.
So we'll hang that for a couple of years, or maybe we can make a run...
That's right. That's what I was going to add. Before you get too attached to it, that's a roving plaque. That goes every two years to whomever wins for that period of time to be held somewhere in the town, to be put up, displayed somewhere in the town hall. If you win again in two years, it'll stay right here. So that's your incentive as far as that's concerned. However, the biggest thing that we found that the towns seem to appreciate, more than the money, more than the plaque, is something that you can keep. This doesn't go anywhere else. This stays right here.
This is quite large.
And it's so that you can take the kind of bow that a winning town can take in declaring itself as the best voting community...
Oh, that's nice.
...having won the citizenship award.
Wow.
And that you keep.
That we keep.
Yes.
That'll be nice on the duck boat that we ride through the other town.
Northbridge, they're pink in front of the town hall there. Everybody does it differently. Could we take a shot with all of you who are holding this? Put it over real close.
Take a picture.
I didn't dress as nicely as Tim did.
You know, you might want to get behind that wall over there, that way you're better with the chairs.
All right. Are those chairs?
If we all could move that way, so that we don't get those table people...
Sherry.
All right, right there is good.
She's being very wassy again.
I know, it's my job.
Some type of people be the boss.
Everybody smile.
Okay, thank you. Can we get the names of everybody and the order?
I have them and I got the picture.
Oh, okay, great. Okay. That's it? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hope to see you in two years, Senator.
I hope so. So, that's the plan. I'm always happy to see you.
I gotta send that to the press also.
Don't make it sound like it's work.
What?
Don't make it sound like it's work.
No, it is.
I wasn't saying that.
Do they send a teacher to board?
Oh, yeah.
He was a bit of a legend.
I don't know.
It felt bad.
It's cruel.
Moore was the one.
What's that?
Senator Moore.
Yeah, I know, I thought it was him. 30 years.
I know.
We could tell Mike he's been selected to learn Italian.
No, that'd actually be a reward for him. The food over there is supposed to be really good.
No, he's gonna be learning here.
Oh, that's true.
Not in Italy. I'd be going.
Mike, you, in the corner with headphones, and Rosetta Stone, you'll learn Italian.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
You too, Doctor.
All right. So, this brings us to item number two, discussion regarding a letter of non-opposition for a wedding venue concept at 229 Main Street and possible votes. And we have Mr. Cole and his wife, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up.
Why is this voice just a general support tape?
Hello.
How is everyone?
Good, how are you?
Excellent, thank you.
So to get the...
My pleasure.
Can I, who are they again, I'm sorry?
Richard Cole.
Richard?
And Sherry Noel.
Sherry. I know you too. Different meeting.
So, Mr. Cole actually had reached out to me through a mutual friend, and he's got a very interesting and appealing project that he's looking to do with the Schuster Mansion. And he's in the process of trying to work through some of the details of the current owner, who's under some financial distress. He's working on getting funding. And I'll actually turn it over to Mr. Cole to kind of...
Oh, thank you.
Explain a little bit about what he's looking to do and what he's looking for from the town.
Essentially, the property is in distress. We know that there's been all the other activity that took place as far as the development and everything else. But from our perspective, we actually like the property like it is, and we have really no interest in the development. So what we'd like to do is be able to find a way to save the property, maintain its intactness, and a way that will perpetually fund it as we move forward. So our thought and idea in that was a wedding venue type of situation, more of a boutique style. We're not talking 200, 300, 400 people, but more in the 100-person range, primarily over the weekends. We'd be looking probably from Friday evening to Sunday evenings. And then in the interim in between, probably some more intimate venue activity, something similar to maybe a quilt guild or meeting something along that line. So, we were hoping that we might be able to get some form of consensus where everybody may be on board with that type of idea. The glitch is, of course, the property is currently zoned as village residential, where I think roughly about 60 or 80 feet away from village business. And under that particular zoning, we wouldn't really fit in. And of course, depending on the town's perspective, we may need some special permitting. I think most of the neighbors that have been talked to or we have met with, some of them are very up and excited about the idea versus the development. And we figured as far as the town, that would leave less burden for everybody else, because it looked like the proposed plan were four bedrooms, which looks very expensive for most towns. So we were hoping that we may get that type of support from the town that they may be looking to go forward.
So, there's a few steps that they have to go through. I know that timing is critical to the Cole's, considering the current financial condition that the property certainly currently sits in. And we've had a couple of discussions, and he's aware that this does need to go to planning and zoning. It's gonna end up as a town meeting vote, but I don't know if their timeline allows to actually go through all of the planning side of it and actually meet with town meeting. So what they would be looking for from us to actually help with some of their financiers is a letter of non-opposition from the Board of Selectmen, saying, you know, we're in support of the project that you're doing, we're not gonna stand in the way, as long as you meet the zoning requirements and follow the laws and planning and zoning works with you. That about sum it up, Matt?
Pretty much, yeah.
And we do realize that there are a few things that we need to iron out in the details. The parking situation looks like it's probably adequate and not a problem, but we have discussed some other things. Of course, we may need to do something on the interior, hopefully without too destructive, but to provide some type of additional fire protection. Most likely, it may not be in our first year, but it is more or less in our second-year plan to make a sewer connection, so that we don't have to deal with that type of thing. And our first-year plan was that we would bring in the more upscale, portable facilities at the venue time, which of course would then leave the premises to be serviced. But those are typically very well-designed, very upscale, they're contained in trailers, in a trailer, a mobile trailer, that actually comes onsite, gets set up. They use the facility after the event takes place, the trailer's removed, serviced, and ready to be used again for the following event. And they adequately handle more than enough volume for what we'd be looking at. So that would be a short-term interim to plug us in in that situation.
So, in the, so I've got this right, the proposal that you're looking at is actually the existing Schuster Mansion, and then it's also the land that encompassed what was going to be a sub-development.
Exactly.
So, and I think there, and as you guys had alluded to, your plan was to leave the sub-development land as-is.
As-is, we have no interest in the development whatsoever.
So you negotiated with the present owner?
Well, that's always an interesting event, isn't it? We've had some previous, we took a look at this idea almost a year ago. Our discussions with the owner at that time were just ridiculous. He was dug in and holding tight in reference to, holding out for the number that he's looking for to sell the project as it is and the mansion.
It was listed as two pieces at the time.
Right.
The development was separate from the house.
Right. Yeah, he had just conceded to that point. Prior to that, he was trying to sell the package. Then he moved to separating the two, and of course, that sale didn't happen. And as you know, the property is in distress, I believe, the 24th, he'd be back in court in reference to that property, as far as the foreclosure moving forward. So, our timeline had really shrunk, but at this point in time, we realized that something needs to be done before the property actually probably goes into foreclosure, from what we've researched and looked at. I'm not, I'm probably not up to par as to what I may or may not talk about, but as anybody has done any research, it's probably unlikely that it's not going to go into foreclosure, since it is substantially behind.
So the primary uses for weddings?
We, and I, excuse me, because I did not include the other detail, we would actually be our residence as well. We would be living there. Right? We, our plan as far as living there was, the mansion is set up in such a way that it was no problem for us to take one small section of the mansion and continue it our residence, while the other portion of the mansion would be available for, like bridal parties, to reside or take the bedroom space and get ready for their event. And then the event at this time would take place outdoors, under a tent, in the backyard. And in the future, probably land two, we would probably be looking at putting something a little bit more permanent, like a pavilion that may fit in architecturally.
Is this gonna be your primary business, or are you gonna, you have other employment, and this is just a way of carrying the nuts, so to speak?
It's a little of both, quite frankly. We do have other employment. I do basically buy apartment buildings, and am more or less a landlord, so I buy apartment buildings, renovate them.
Real estate development?
Right, repair them. Not on a huge scale, I wouldn't consider myself a developer, but mostly, I don't build anything new, and haven't for, I don't know, just probably since I got out of the service in 1980. So, I take old, existing structures, renovate them, and then provide them for sale or hold them as apartments or rental availability. And I have some over in Dudley and up in the Whistler area. Sherry has a very successful business, quilting, and that's her primary income. Unfortunately, both our incomes combined, probably not really substantially enough to satisfy a bank as far as supporting the property as-is. So, we would most likely have to buy out in the million-dollar range, and then of course, to fund the business itself. So we have been scrambling for funds, and it looks like we can actually come up with what we'd need in reference to the down payment. We haven't had a final answer yet, as far as funding the rest of the project. But it does look promising. Granite State's working with the CDC. We've put most of the project together, working with Clark University. So they've put all the performers and projections together, as well as the entire business plan and package we've plugged in where necessary. They've connected us with the necessary support staff to actually move forward and make that happen. And Granite State thinks they look like they can place most of the loan without too much of a problem, which of course, that type of loan, we'd have to break that up in various stages.
And you'd be serving food, dinner, outside catering?
All those things were, in our plan, all those things, we would actually sub out, right? We would have other vendors provide those things. So we would not be preparing food onsite, they would be brought in by catering services. We would not be serving liquor onsite, that would be by a professional service company that would provide that service, so they'd be fully licensed and insured properly for the event to take place.
We have three pizza places, you know. Just send out?
Grill on Main.
And a couple of liquor stores. So, I mean, they could deliver kegs and pizza, and that would be...
So our primary role would just be providing the facility. We would be outsourcing the rest of those activities to other professionals.
So you truly just the venue?
Exactly. Right. And of course, we figured during the week or the times that weddings weren't taking place, we may be able to make the venue available for other activities, much smaller, more intimate activities. You know, birthday parties, holiday parties, things like that, or selectmen parties.
We party all the time.
We don't party.
Get up.
At this point in life, I consider the lounge chair in the backyard a pretty good party, so...
How's our personal version like Ozzy Osbourne over here?
Those days are past.
The head of the chicken.
A Friday night usually takes me the weekend to recover, so...
It's a bat.
It's a bat. Yeah. Well, with hell, it's peeps.
Oh, okay, now I understand.
I think the use is very compatible for that facility, I think, so...
Well, what caught my attention with it is like the idea that it's a historic mansion, like it's definitely a landmark. And I know, if it ends up going out to auction, and you get another developer in there, that mansion will get torn down. Yeah, they'll take it down. So, because it is, it's older, and most of the developers that I know, that does not fit in the, in the plan of doing a development. And they really don't want to take existing historic property and try and build around that, because it kind of hinders what they're trying to do.
How old is that building?
1930...
30, it's the 30s, I don't remember.
1931, 33, somewhere around there.
So have you guys already done some walkthroughs through it? Is there a lot of renovation that you're gonna have to do? Is it...
Uh, probably more exterior.
Exterior renovation. So painting, window replacement, shore up the roof.
There's some rot.
Yeah. There's a little bit of exterior rot here and there.
The interior is in pretty good condition.
Yep.
It's more cosmetic.
So, and did they, and just out of curiosity, because I'm nosey, did they end up keeping it so it's kind of like era looks the same as it should?
It hasn't really changed, yes. They did. The kitchen was highly renovated and upgraded, but it's still intact relatively period-style, just very modernized.
There's a ballroom too, right?
Yes and no.
It's really like a foyer with a...
Yeah, a very large foyer.
Like to me, there's a nice staircase for photography.
Does it have murals on the walls?
Does it have any murals?
No, there were murals on the walls, like, I don't know if it was, I don't remember if it was like the wallpaper was like a huge mural, or if it was painted.
Gone.
Oh, that's too bad.
Yeah. Most of the bathrooms are still period?
It's, it's, there's not really any large rooms. There's a lot of bedrooms.
Yes.
And three of them are suites. So the whole second floor is bedrooms, which, it's actually set up quite nicely for what we're thinking of doing, because you can sort of close off one whole section and have just the suites, which are at the top of like the staircase. Or you can open up that hallway and three more bedrooms, and then there's like a bunk room. And two of our daughters are, like, they're licensed in cosmetology and massage and Reiki, and we're thinking of having like a spa component too.
That'd be pretty cool.
Yeah. And I think what we off, what we could offer that we haven't really seen is a place to go, spend some time, get ready, have your celebration, stay over, you know, with your party or your family. And it's not, you know, okay, you have four hours. I've just been through this with one of my daughters, and we were looking, you know, quite a bit, we ended up out in fields. Because, you know, there wasn't really a place that, you know, we were looking for something like this would be. And anyway, so I think it would be a really unique venue.
Would you do bed and breakfast too?
We toss that around, but that's probably not really our thing so much, but we...
I just, I'm not sure of, I haven't really looked into, I guess, what I would need to do that. So it could work in?
Well, that's what we're thinking, we were tossing around a few extra ideas, right, when we weren't doing the...
Or you can open up that hallway and three more bedrooms, and then there's like a bunk room. And two of our daughters are, like, they're licensed in cospathology and massage and Reiki, and we're thinking of having like a spa component too.
That'd be pretty cool.
Yeah. And I think what we off, what we could offer that we haven't really seen is a place to go, spend some time, get ready, have your celebration, stay over, you know, with your bride, with your party or your family. And it's not, you know, okay, you have four hours. I've just been through this with one of my daughters, and we were looking, you know, quite a bit, we ended up out in fields. Because, you know, there wasn't really a place that, you know, we were looking for something like this would be. Anyway, so I think it would be a really unique venue.
Would you do bed and breakfast too?
We toss that around, but that's probably not really our thing so much, but we.
I just, I'm not sure of, I haven't really looked into, I guess, what I would need to do that. So it could work in?
Well, that's what we're thinking, we were tossing around a few extra ideas, right, when we weren't doing the wedding over the weekend. Like, well, we'd have maybe three, four, five other days of the week that it could be useful for something else. There's not a whole lot of places to stay around here, so maybe something like Airbnb or a little bit of accommodation, but nothing, you know, high volume or big deal kind of thing.
But we could certainly do like rehearsal dinners and showers and family reunions and, you know, that kind of stuff. So whether or not that's considered B and B, if we have people staying over, maybe it is, I don't know.
It just looks like a cool venue, like when you see it from the road.
It really is, when you go in, it's very nice inside, it's very pretty.
It's, it's set up quite nicely for this. The, there's two rooms where we were thinking we would, what we would use. They're off the kitchen, kind of like what the servants' quarters were. There's a couple different staircases, so it's easy to separate things.
That was the other thing I announced about the property, several egresses? Right, the main floor had at least four, five egresses. So we figured as far as the safety issues go, we'd be pretty well covered with the ability to get in and out of the building. And again, the main event wouldn't take place inside the building anyways. It would really only be available for the bridal parties. The main wedding event with your guests would take place outside, under the, under a tent environment.
And the zoning change, the zoning, would that permit you to be a resident and run the, as well?
It should. I think we would all have to double check that, just to make sure.
Village commercial?
That would be village business and a residential use would be an accessory use.
It did seem like it plugged in. And may require a couple of tweaks in the language to be okay. We had considered asking about a special permit, although that can get gray down the road. If we made a million five investment, and a year and a half from now, somebody really had a problem.
A special permit will probably scare your investors a touch.
Yeah, absolutely scare them to death. It gives you the opportunity to pull the plug.
I think the way, really the way to go is the, you know, the zoning modification, and then make sure that we do it so we're not spot zoning.
Well, you wouldn't be. I think you're very safe from.
Yeah, because it's right on.
You're extending an existing zone across the street.
Yeah.
So that, that gets you out of that. The better part of wisdom may be to add the use to the table as well as changing the zone. Just to be clear. Because the categories in the use table are very vague, and, you know, it can be bent this way and that way. Nothing really fit what you were trying to do very clearly. So it would just be better to specify it in the use table as of right, and then as strong as you can get.
So we'd modify that, plus the zoning map would be modified too?
That's right. It's in a good spot, because it's between, not only is it contiguous to an existing village business zone, it's in between that one and another one on the same street.
Yes.
So really, the town's overall plan or progress forward.
Kind of unifies it a little bit more.
And then there are, there are businesses on lots that aren't zoned for business, but, you know, arguably, that whole card, or it could be village business, because of GBI's presence and.
Right.
It's there too, so.
I think in most towns anyways, that kind of happens a little bit, more or less, just because of the way that town developed from its inception and it grew.
But having said all of that, I mean, I think everybody realizes zoning changes require a two-thirds vote.
At town meeting. So, but would it be, would it make sense for our board, at least to help him with the financing side of it, to put together a, you know, we're willing to work with you style?
I drafted you a letter.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
The only thing I have to change is the salutation, because I messed up your last name.
That's okay.
How's that item?
I had, I had Coles and Knowles.
Now, if it's helpful, I will tell you my mother's maiden name is Aldridge, if that's helpful. So if you do some historic digging, I actually have lineage to the property.
Oh, yeah? Is that how you know about it?
No. No.
I just think.
But that would, that would be Aldridge, who developed Upton and Mendon and Oxbridge, married into the Shusters and eventually into the Rockefellers. However, I didn't have enough lineage to have them write me a check.
I can't catch up.
So I couldn't catch up on that one.
You wake up one day, you own half of Vicadia National Park.
It's not a bad deal.
I liked the letter.
Yeah, so I'll just fix this.
So you need a vote from us, right?
Well, so what I would ask you to do is to kind of agree to this next-to-last paragraph, "Town administrator and department heads are authorized and directed to allocate time and effort to provide project proponents with timely and accurate information", which is what we're endeavoring to do. I've got a memo for you.
Okay.
That, we're trying to be thorough. We're not trying to be.
No, 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 no.
I think that the professional staff really are excited about this proposal. They also don't want you to trip up on anything.
Right.
Change of use usually triggers a bunch of things that people are not aware of. You probably are, because.
A little bit of them, yes. Not, there's always little nuances.
From residential to business, there are plumbing code changes, there are other things that happen. We just want to make sure you're aware of them. But we're here as a resource to help you through it.
Right.
Not to create obstacles, so.
Excellent.
I'll share that with you at the appropriate time. The one part in the front here is, for you to consider, is if you should come into possession of the property as you plan to. It may be possible to swing a deal with the town to reduce your financial burden. Because there is land there that's perennial stream and real dam structure that you may not want to take on the responsibility of being the owner of a dam. But because of the historical significance and the environmental impact of it, the town might have an interest. Now, that's not going to offer you, it's probably going to be a bigger break in your taxes than it would be cash from the sale.
Right.
But, you know, it might be the best way to do it. The town's historic fire station is right on the side of the pond.
Yeah.
So we could put all that together, and then the land runs behind this building.
Yes.
So there would be some consolidation, people would have access for passive recreation.
I think we whispered hints about that.
Yep. So that's, I was thinking about, out loud about it, because it.
Right.
Might help you just only focus on what you can handle and what you need. The rest would just let it go wild, and I think a lot of people would appreciate that. Creates a natural buffer from anybody who's settled on this side.
On this side, yeah, of the water.
Makes sense to me. So, I mean, I'm aware of the last thing, I have no issues with that last paragraph.
So all you have to do is fill in the letter, we'll send the letter to the polls and.
Why is the pool location infamous?
On the receiving end of any of the correspondence.
I'll forward you some emails if you'd like, Hal.
Oh.
Oh, you're catching that? The pool location, yes.
Is formerly known as a pool at the.
Yeah, there's no pool there.
So, not that it's really my business, but was that kind of a requirement? Or was that just kind of a bad?
That was, be careful what you ask for.
People were warned that government doesn't do brain surgery.
Yes.
We swing cudgels.
Exactly.
And so when there's a zoning violation, all we can do is enforce the zoning code. We can't pick and choose the pieces that we want to choose. So the result was we had a non-conforming structure that had to be removed.
Yeah, I figured it kind of went in that direction.
There was much caution offered under the, you sure you want to do this? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We're here to help, but we also are, we also try to.
That's the boundary of we're here to help.
When I was looking at the development plan, I was like, oh, I'm pretty sure I know why that disappeared, yeah.
So, it's one of those, we try to say, you don't, there's times that we help you by saying you don't want our help.
Exactly.
So.
And at the same time, you have negotiated with the owner, so you know it's difficult. The more sensible solution wasn't reached there, I think. I guess there's some stuff.
Yeah, he was being interesting. I actually looked at that, and I found it like, all right, so you've got a pool in the backyard, and that's a separate lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm glad I passed. I like my small home, it's much easier to eat.
All right, so we'll, you need to vote, yeah, you need to vote to send a letter.
Support the conceptual reuse of the Schuster mansion and the zoning changes that are necessary to accomplish that pursuant to the proposal from the town administrator?
I'll second the motion.
Does that satisfy it, Matt?
Yes.
All right, so it was made by Hal and seconded by Tim. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, next question is, how deep's everyone's pocket?
You're the Rockefeller.
That's exactly how it got that way though, right? None of us are looking to buy in a mansion, just so.
We may be swarmed around town, you know, if you can dig around it.
Do you think there's some buried stuff here and there? Wow, there could be.
You know there is.
Yeah, there's probably a lot of.
I bet you, if you went metal detecting on that property, you'd find a lot.
I wouldn't be surprised.
Can I do it tomorrow?
I just want to see the place. I've never actually seen anything like up close.
I've been there, with the Red Sox.
I heard.
We were there with the Red Sox and the Yankees back when we had the reenactment game.
Oh, yeah.
I thought you were going to say the original game, Suzanne.
No, not the, we all. Thanks, Kevin.
Ted Williams was there, I think.
Yes.
Yep, no, Ted Williams did not come.
Oh, I thought he stayed there.
Not to the reenactment.
Oh, not, no, he stayed there originally.
Oh, originally, yes, yes, he was there originally.
Right.
Schuster brought everybody, yeah, Schuster brought everybody there. He gave them gifts, shotguns, washer machines, cloth. They gave them all sorts of gifts.
Carol Guglinski told me, because she forced me to buy a sweatshirt at Oktoberfest, and I was not getting away from her without spending $20 on a sweatshirt. Had the entire lineage of it, so. If you go to Oktoberfest, Carol will come and get you too, especially if she finds out you own the house.
I bet, yeah.
Sweatshirts for everyone.
Fantastic. We'll let you finish your business, thank you very much.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Well, if you got it, we're excited.
Keep me posted how it goes.
Absolutely.
I'll see you again, Charlie.
If anybody has, angel investor kicking somewhere, that's wow.
If I come across one.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
I miss that place, that was a great restaurant.
I knew I knew her.
Do you remember, clock and kettle?
Oh, yeah, Pop Over's the shame.
Yeah.
Gene used to work there, did you know that?
I'm sure that's why every Pop Over was perfect. Every Pop Over had a story.
Right, and you had to hear it.
Nobody ever found a Pop Over.
There was no, no extra Pop Overs.
They were very strict when you could order from the lunch menu with a tip.
It was that and Mog Lockner's was the other good place.
Mog Lockner's, yep.
All right, so now that we have Gene's backstory, which we'll use against her at a later date. We have an appointment to the Board of Health, Lethlam, impossible votes.
Yep, Emily's in the audience, she's been waiting patiently.
Come on up. We've been long-winded, Emily, we're sorry.
That's okay. Emily has been attending meetings, and the board does support her appointment. So if you could please appoint her to a term ending June period 2022.
Do you have a health background?
Yes, I have a degree, bachelor's degree in public health and biology.
Sounds perfect. And you're healthy too?
I am. I'm getting a new job in environmental health and safety too, so I'm really excited about that.
Excellent. So are you a Douglas High School graduate as well?
Yep.
Awesome. Well, first of all, it's nice to see younger folks actually like volunteering and getting involved with the community, so it's hard enough to get guys my age to do it. Even harder to get guys Bonan's age to do it, he's much older than me.
Take a motion.
I will. I would be glad to make a motion to appoint Emily to the Board of Health for a term ending June 30th, 2022, if that's okay with you.
Second.
All right, it was made by Tim and seconded by Hal. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Congratulations.
I'll be sending you a letter, I'll send it tomorrow, you'll get it.
You didn't even see that one coming.
Thanks, Emily.
We have a, huh? Class two license renewal for Douglas Auto Sales, impossible votes.
Did you guys read your memo? All right, this was the one that we held.
For the record, I did.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't sure if it was accurate on the agenda, so I didn't read it.
This is the application that we held because of back taxes being owed. In the meantime, there was more information came to light. I did contact Tim Bonan, Tim Bonan. Rich Bowen.
You're a lawyer?
Another good-looking guy.
Rich Bowen, for his opinion, he did state that, that even though we adopted Master and Law Chapter 4057, that there are bankruptcy laws and that you really can't hold them accountable by holding back their license when they're in bankruptcy. If they weren't in bankruptcy, this, yes, you could hold the license, but.
Okay.
Cheryl Vadia did have some concerns, and she wanted to know if you would, she recommended that you grant the license contingent upon the party doing a memorandum agreement. But Rich Bowen again states that.
We can't do that.
He just suggests that you go ahead and approve the license.
And the license would be in the wife's name?
The license is not in the wife's name, the house is in the wife's name. But the license, the house is the address that the license is under, and it's also the corporation address, so.
Was Rich aware of that?
Yes, yes, I sent him.
So that didn't make a difference?
I sent him information on everything.
Well, it looks like based off in the memo, it sounds like we're not really allowed to take any kind of an action, because we're deemed a creditor, and he's protected by that.
Well, she's protected though.
Well, you're the lawyer, no? If the corporation's.
Outside of my area, yes, corporation's a separate animal.
But if it sits there, and it's currently protected, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I don't even play one on TV, and I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express. I mean, I guess this is what we have Town Council for.
Yeah, I did give him, I sent him copies of the application, the Articles of Organization. I think we even sent him some of the stuff from Cheryl.
I'm of the mindset that we would follow the advice of Town Council. So I would entertain a motion. If anybody chooses to make it.
To renew?
Yeah.
Make a motion to renew the class two license, it's in our packet, for Douglas Auto Sales.
It was made by Tim, seconded by Hal. I want to go on record saying it's under the advice of legal counsel that we're approving this. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. So we have a Chapter 61 right of first refusal for 5.19 acres on Orange Street, and possible votes.
This is the, I think.
Do you want that acreage, Hal?
Fifth. Application or notice that you've seen on this parcel on Orange Street. This one's for 5.19 acres. The application or the notice was sent to the planning board and the Concom, and they have all suggested that you do not exercise your right of first refusal.
I thought I had one.
All right.
In our packet, there was a letter from the. Open Space Committee?
Yes, they met last night.
Same issue?
They, well, they met last night, and they are going to, under protest, not have a recommendation. They think that the process should not allow people to take lots of land out of, or take it piecemeal out of 61. But they'll be sending a letter to the selectmen later.
We can address that at a later time.
Exactly.
All right.
They are just an advisory board anyway, so.
That hurt.
Well.
You know the thing about advice, Suzanne, it's only valuable when asked for.[1796.24]
All right.
By law, we don't have to notify them. We do as a courtesy, so...
Just saying. You liked where that one went. Admit it.
No. Speechless.
You've been the lawyer.
But, I mean, you know, file a complaint to us?
Yes.
About the state law?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to fix the state law?
We'll make a motion that we waive the 5.19 acres on Orange Street, or interested in.
I don't think I'm in the butter on that.
Good note.
Made by Tim.
Going to the north of you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There it is, Hal.
I don't want it to be so easy. Draw it out a little bit.
It's mainly drawn.
Made by Tim, seconded by Hal. All those in favor say aye.
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 And if you can sign that. I send them a letter anyways, but...
Third reading and approval of the Townwide Electronic Notification Service. Has anything changed since the previous two readings? Okay.
I would make a motion that we approve the Townwide Electronic Notification Service policy as deliberated by the Board of Selectmen.
Absolutely. And give the chairman code red access codes. Right. Just saying.
Dot 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 dash.
That's just going to scribble away and act like I didn't even say that.
Sounds like an amendment you would need somebody to second your motion to amend.
Do I hear a second, Tim?
Not here.
No? Hal?
No.
There's some peeps in it for you.
It's not peep season.
So would you like to second Tim's original motion?
Second.
All right, then. It was made by Tim, seconded by Hal, stymied by both of you for my amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Designation of special employees, a building commissioner, and building inspectors, and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, the general rule of thumb is we designate positions as special employees, and under the ethics code, if that class meets the other requirements of the ethics code, that class of employees may be a party to more than one contract with the town at, you know, for different purposes and different times. And this actually protects us. If we're going to have part-time employees in these roles, we may want them to work with us in more than one way, and this gives us the flexibility to do that. We've already brought this to you previously for tutors and paraprofessionals
Right.
up at the school, in the school system.
Your motion?
So moved.
I'll second this, so moved.
Made by Hal, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? Do you have any questions or anything, Tim?
No.
You sure?
Not at this time.
All right, then. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right. Approved list of vehicles for auction. I have the list here. So it hasn't changed. A 1962 Ford pickup fire brush truck, 2004 Ford Explorer, 2007 Ford E450 ambulance, 89 Ellen 800 catch basin, 81 $48,000 fire truck slash Sander. Sorry.
Multitasking. The overhead.
Yeah, yeah. And a 1990 GMC Box van. Is that it?
Yes, sir, we have no reason to believe that this list should change. Nothing's been added to it either. There's been a fair amount of interest, but I think everybody's just waiting for your approval. Under the bylaw, you have to approve the list. Make a motion that we approve the list of automobiles, obviously defined.
Very.
For sale.
Second.
Made by Tim, seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Letter of comment to FCC.
I don't know what happens here, because I believe you need to recuse yourself, and that would mean you don't have a quorum.
Correct. Can we skip over this one? Come back to it?
You can do back to it. I think the comment period may already have closed, but we want to be supportive of the cable committee if we can, so we would still send correspondence if the board votes to do that. I think you're out of luck. You would not have sufficient membership to vote tonight.
I can't.
No, that's fine. I just...
All right. So we'll come back to item nine when we have a larger...
If it's... If the period's still open. If we missed it, we missed it. Yeah, we send it anyway. I mean, it doesn't hurt.
Item number 10, Personnel Policies Amendment, first reading.
Mr. Chairman, this is really... Talk about old business. These policies were adopted by the Town of Douglas in 2012 and subsequently revised in 2016 after the passage of the Town Administrator Act, or the Special Act creating the Town Administrator and Finance Director of the Town. Attorney Mazer went through the personnel policies and procedures of the town and updated them to reflect the impact of the Act, which was to make your Town Administrator your Personnel Director for purposes of all of the personnel by law and the policies. It's taken some time to try to, you know, sort this out with the Personnel Board being an advisory board, et cetera, et cetera. But we need some clarity. I mean, whenever we come into a disciplinary issue or whatnot, this is not the most recent version... Approved version of these policies. They revert back to the prior version of the policies where the Town Administrator... The executive administrator, which was Mike's title, didn't have a lot of the authority that a Personnel Director would have had. So we do have to pull this up to speed. And frankly, we've been operating under the unapproved policies just because they comport with the Special Act. What the changes are appears in this red line copy in many places.
I have a list on the front of the memo.
Yeah, the word assistant is replaced with administrator. There are a couple of new paragraphs drafted. This has to go through three readings, but it establishes the role of the Town Administrator with respect to the personnel system of the town. I personally believe the Personnel Board still has a role to play. For instance, one place I'd like them to be more involved is we need to do a self-audit on our pay equity track record. And that's something where an advisory board, going back through the job descriptions and the way the town is configured, could provide an advisory opinion that would give us all some options and a way to think about the issue. But that's a good role, but the actual administration of the personnel policies of the town really should now, under modern... A lot of the modern law be with the Town Administrator, who gets the training, who is indemnified through our Maya, you know, errors and omissions policy and all of the different... Things have gotten very touchy these days with managing staff, and that's what all that training is about. And that... Those principles filter through right through job descriptions and evaluation procedures because there needs to be that fairness and that perspective across the board when dealing with employees. But that, unfortunately, I don't... I think my predecessor felt the same way. I feel this way. If you're a part-time board, you know, meeting once a month, you just don't... You haven't developed that expertise. This isn't about the table, the compensation table anymore. This is about, you know, modern law and some of the enforcement actions that have been taken as our culture has changed and our law has adapted to it.
So it would be more using Personnel Board on an as-needed basis for auditing? You'd almost put them down to where you meet with them quarterly?
As needed... I mean, I think there are still places where, you know, we look at... Another good examples with call firefighters and where they fall in the table. We probably need to rectify that. It would be good to have another set of eyes or a group of people reviewing that, talking about the issues, so that it gets filtered before it comes to your level. But on this day-to-day administration stuff, it really falls to our office to deal with all this stuff.
Okay. I remember this on previous agendas.
Yeah, no, this is...
So it's nice to see it's overdue.
Discussion that's long been...
Overdue.
...in the making. And I thought Matt summed it up fairly well. Ultimately, it's in support of the Town Administrator position and the Special Act that the townspeople wrote it on some 18 years ago. All right? Is it that long?
It's been a while, yeah.
So we're moving in the right direction, just not quite... We'll get there. All right. So we have the updated job descriptions for Municipal Facilities Manager and Finance Director, and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, my reading of all these, the bylaw and the policies, is that the definitions of these jobs are the domain of the Board of Selectmen as the executive branch for the town. The Municipal Facilities Manager did have an existing job description. I don't know why it says adopted on this copy. That was my error. Or maybe I thought that we'd be pursuing this earlier, which is what I probably thought a week before Christmas. The job has changed over time. I think when Mr. Colonero did most of this work, was full-time employee of the town, there was a whole bunch of things he did, cutting grass and doing other things that were moved away from the position. And now, really, what we're looking at is someone who has intimate knowledge of our buildings and our properties. And this job description needed to be updated slightly to reflect that. I've reviewed this with Adam Furno, and he is perfectly happy with it. And I ask that you approve it. There's a list here of the buildings that the Facilities Manager, who is a department head, is responsible for.
This isn't a new position, right?
This is not a new position. It's just been... As you know, Adam occupies a very strange mix of positions. He works... This was originally was supposed to be like a 2080 split or 2575, but it's morphed into like a 50/50 split. His time as a department head and the other 50% he spends at the Highway Department as an employee there, under a different pay rate. So he appears in various places in the budget. This would not change those hours at this time. This is just a description of the job. Having a valid job description is what I need to do in order to finish the evaluation. This employee's already been evaluated, but I haven't finalized the written evaluation with him because I want to make sure this is approved before I do that.
And I'm assuming it's similar with the job description for the Finance Director.
In the case of the Finance Director, the position was created by the Special Act and was never given a job description. Now, the Special Act itself is fairly detailed, so it isn't necessary to go into the substantive responsibilities of the position as much as it is the internal function. So this was brought up to speed by reflecting the supervisory requirements of the job, because it's not in the Act, and what those entail in terms of evaluation of employee performance. And then one thing that we're doing with all the job descriptions is updating the ADA, physical and mental abilities needed to meet the requirements associated with essential functions. That's a... Going back to that conversation we just had about modern standards. We have to work with employees who may need a reasonable accommodation to perform the job. But at some point, if they simply cannot perform the essential functions of the job, we have options as an employer. We have to write in detail what the physical, mental requirements of the job are so that we can establish what is necessary to do the position. In this particular case, you know, a lot of the requirements of a Finance Director would be mental acumen, being able to remember, being able to process, you know, analyzing numbers, and all of those things are absolutely necessary for the job. So I reviewed this with Gene. We're going to make one small amendment. We're going to refine the definition of a declared emergency. So this is midway down the front page, the sentence that begins, "In the event of a declared emergency or disaster", which is simply going to say, "In the event of a federally declared disaster." This is a small point, but in the event of a disaster, a gubernatorial designation of emergency or disaster, a presidential declaration, the emergency operations of the town need to conform to the incident management system and all of those activity sets that go into filing for reimbursement and for running the emergency operations of the town. It's not just firefighters and police officers anymore. Now, the administrative staff is set up to file all the paperwork required to do a proper accounting so that the town can get reimbursed at the end. The assumption being that Town Hall is closed. I mean, if the disaster's bad enough, our employees aren't coming in. But in this particular case, the Finance Director would be pressed into service to be the Director of Finance for the recovery effort. And it needs to be part of a job description because while Gene would be very perfectly amenable, I think, to playing this role, it's really not optional. So if we're dealing with somebody other than Gene, you know, it's a matter of you got to come. You know, if you live in...
And there's four feet of snow.
...Oxboro, and you're the Finance Director for Douglas, you got to come because we need you to fill this role. So that's not an issue with Gene, but it might be in the future, so the job description had to say that. There are other issues that she wanted to discuss with me. I think we agreed that they're well set with. We don't expect our Finance Director to have an intimate knowledge of assessing or of other... What was it? There's assessment and school, school business manager-type considerations. Does not need intimate knowledge, but needs to have working knowledge. Somebody... You can't really be the Finance Director in a town like this if you don't have the basic knowledge of school choice in, school choice out, Chapter 70, how does it all work? So you don't have to be an expert, but you do have to understand what it's all about. So that's these two job descriptions. And as I said, finalizing the descriptions will allow me to close the book on the evaluations since they've already been done. With that, I would make a motion that we update and approve the job descriptions of Municipal Facilities Manager and the Finance Director.
Second.
Made by Tim, seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Discussion about the draft health insurance joint purchasing group intermunicipality, intermunicipal agreement.
Did that draft make its way to you?
It's not in the packet.
It's not in the packet, but... Well, that's okay.
Tell us about it.
It's okay because what I would have said to you the day we posted this is very different now. The different municipalities and the school district that have been involved in this discussion around a joint purchasing group have begun to put pen to paper to craft the fundamental governance structure of such an arrangement. We have had three drafting sessions, and we have a final drafting session on the 24th of January. The decision of whether or not to enter the group isn't going to be made only on the governance document. It'll be made on the numbers that come back from the bidders for the business.
No sense of implementing if we're not going to save the financial...
Exactly. And I think that's everybody's got the same perspective. So parallel tract with the governance document has been the quote process to quote the insurance. And those... We've now been through two rounds because in the original round, one of the major carriers didn't decline to bid. They just didn't meet the deadline. Because that carrier has the existing business of three of the... Or four of the five entities that want to come together in the group. It was important to get them to bid. So there's been a lot of scrambling around to persuade them to bid. The other bidders were all willing to extend the terms of their existing bid in a second round so that the other bidder could come in and compete for the business. round so that the other bidder could come in and compete for the business. So that's where we are right now with it. I'll give you more in my update on what we understand about our health insurance coverage. But the basic outlines of this is the communities that are coming together do not want to trigger collective bargaining issues. What we're looking to do is to change from, those of us that are fully insured, we would like to consider a self-insurance model. For those that are already self-insured, they want other plan options for their employees that might save them money. So the concept here is that the group would go out and get bids for three levels of policy, of gold, silver, and bronze, if you will, but are not necessarily compelled to offer all three plans to their employees. If you're at the gold level already, you probably would offer all three because you might save money if people migrate to silver and bronze. The bronze plan, it's the Douglas plan. So we wouldn't be offering our employees the trade-up, we would just be offering bronze. The difference is, instead of going to market as a group of 300, we'd be going to market as a group of over 1,500. Now, if you're familiar with the industry, being that large makes you a so-called national account as opposed to being a small local business account. So it changes the way people look at your risk profile and the rates they want to extend to you. So that's the appeal of it, and it's also the stability of it. The provisions we've been debating at great length are, you know, how do you buy in? How do you get out? The rough outline is that the notion would be an excess balance of between eight to 12% of claims would be carried by the group as a group to shelter the group from spikes in claims activity from any of its members. And that would never exceed 12%. So if the group had more than 12% of claims in the bank, it would be redistributed as a premium credit, as a credit against the working rates. And we're exploring various options for reinsurance. There are some innovative things that we're talking about there in terms of tiering or self-insuring. So we would get reinsurance for that nasty zone between 100 and 200,000, for instance. But anything over 200, maybe we would self-insure against that as well because we'd probably save money there. So there's a lot of progressive thinking that's gone into this. Consultants that have put this together advise that we might be one of the most progressive groups established. So if you want to refer to some history, I would invite you to look at the Cape Cod Regional Health Insurance Purchasing Group. Mayflower is another one.
How many are there in the state?
There are 13 or 14 that work with our consultant. But there are none in Worcester County. We would be the first.
And what's, has it been pretty uniform that there have been substantial savings?
So the key to governance.
Yeah.
Is to prevent that equity from getting to be too large or too small.
Yeah.
Those groups that haven't adopted those limits have been captured by political pressure to keep rate increases at zero, 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 zero every year. And then they run out of equity, and what happens?
Yeah.
The rates explode.
Yeah.
And they're, you know, politically in a tough spot. So you want to maintain that cushion and not let it get too big so that you're really kind of managing to your costs. But once again, we won't make a recommendation to our various boards of selectmen and town councils and school committees until the numbers are actually in on the bid, we see what we're going to save.
Any percentage savings that the other groups have realized of what it would have been?
Some of them have been around for so long, it's kind of hard to say where would they be now.
Yeah.
This is almost a way for the market to cherry pick itself. People sitting around the table all have good claims experience. And we're not really inclined to invite a municipality with really poor claims experience to join us and just drag us down.
Yeah.
I'll get into the health insurance renewal during my report, but that's kind of where we are. I have a document at the end of today that I think I can share with you. And we'll put it into the public record as a discussion point because I think now we've ironed out a lot of, Rich Bowens' comments have been addressed, and I think we're, we have a pretty good document now. The governance would be, every town gets one representative. And at this point, it would be a board of directors of five people for you to designate, as well as an alternate, so that we're always representative if one person isn't available. So who is it? It's the towns of Milbury, Webster, Southbridge, and Douglas, and the Dudley-Charlton School District, the five entities that are looking at this.
Blackstone Valley didn't want to participate.
They were invited, they nosed around it, and then they didn't, didn't return phone calls.
They may be waiting a year and see if they can come in year two or something.
Or they're looking at it and saying, we've got a better deal.
I think this is a renewal year for them. I mean, they don't ask me for advice. They interacted more with the town manager in Northbridge, who had just gone out to bid, and played, played a couple of big vendors off against each other, and then those vendors versus the GIC. And so they wanted to kind of follow that dynamic and see if they could get a better deal. I personally think that's, that's a one-time, that's going to work once, and then you're going to be right back to where you started, but.
The key to it is, is the larger your subscriber base, is the better off you're going to be and the more pull that you'll have with your, with your HMOs and insurance providers. So, because, I mean, I look at our organization, there's, we get a lot, you know? I mean, you're 120, 130,000 subscribers. So they listen, and our rates are very controlled because any one of these guys does not want to lose an account that size.
Right.
So if you get up anything over 200 or 300, you know, which is worth, you get into 15, 16, 1700 people, you've got a much louder voice with most of the carriers. And then if that grows, it gets even better.
And the shock effect of a couple of large claims is diluted.
Yeah.
And that's the problem of being a small group. Four, five large claims can be 20, 25% of your claims experience.
Okay. So there's nothing. It is. Nice work, Matt.
We're getting there.
So we have to approve the minutes for the December 18th, 2018 regular and executive session.
I would make a motion that we approve the December 18th minutes, the regular Board of Selectmen meeting, as well as the same day we held an executive session, but I imagine we want to retain those minutes.
Second.
All right, made by Tim, seconded by Hal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now we want to release item 11B, contract negotiations of November 20th, 2018 executive session minutes.
Make a motion that we release item 11B, the contract negotiation discussion of November 20th.
Second.
All right, made by Tim, seconded by Hal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to your report.
Mr. Administrator. To keep it in keeping with the conversation we just had, we've had a preliminary conversation with our carrier for renewal for one year, and the renewal rate suggested was an 11.28% increase. I'm very glad that we have the joint purchasing group as a potential option because that renewal rate is based upon claims experience of 95.5% loss ratio before pooling. After pooling, it's 87%. Now, experts in the industry will tell you that if that's where you are, then you're looking at a market rate increase, nothing more, no market plus. So we really should be, at the most, around 8%. And a lot of those eights are being negotiated down to sixes. And that's just the way that the market works.
Yeah.
There has been some conflicting presentation from the broker about where we are. So we're told in one metric that compared to other groups of our size and our rough composition, we actually outperform the municipal market for a group of our size. We do much better. And yet, the exact language that was used with me was, quote unquote, "You," the town of Douglas, "you deserve a double-digit increase."
Like it's good deserve or punished deserve.
Yeah, exactly. And so I got to tell you, I'm starting to really challenge the credibility of the presentation. I'm tired of hearing that, you know, internal analysts say that you should have been at a 24, so they've given you a break at 12, so we're not going to negotiate down the 12 for you. And I think it all comes down to the fact that the broker's paid by the carrier.
Yeah.
Not by the town.
Right.
And the thing about a joint purchasing group is it's the other way around. The experts work for the town.
Yeah.
Not necessarily versus the carrier, but yeah, versus the carrier. They're on the other side of the table, and that really makes a huge difference. So I'd rather not work with that renewal. I'd rather have other options. But that is pretty much where we are if we don't take any other changes.
Will the group price come in timely enough to?
I'm hoping that we can pull it all together and make the change sooner rather than later.
We didn't, when we did our five-year modeling, we never anticipated health insurance at that kind of a.
It was modeled at 8%, which was the market.
So, yeah, he can, he can pound sand, as far as I'm concerned.
The bus contract is soon to be bid out. There's been back and forth between school administration and me. My direction to them as the procurement officer for the town is that I would like it bid out as an RFP, a request for proposals, not an invitation for bid. There's a difference. Invitation for bid, you really specify in excruciating detail what you want, and you get price quotes against that, and you pick the lowest.
Yeah.
Request for proposals is you put it out there and you tell the vendor, you have to design what you're going to do for us, and we'll establish the parameters that you have to hit. If you don't hit those parameters, you may not be qualified to be awarded the business. That's a totally different negotiation dynamic. So what I ask the school department to do is specify your parameters. Kids are picked up no earlier than X, they're dropped off at school no later than X. Keep a lot of, there's a lot of great stuff in their existing contract about quality. So they've really thought about it, but it's this dynamic that they haven't. I don't want the existing vendor to design the routes for inclusion in the bid document and then go out on the other side and bid against it. Right? That's not the appropriate dynamic. And I think what you get when you don't do it that way is the bus company thinking they have monopoly designs route system that's the best for them. And if you're driving a bus for me, I want you to always be on the same roads, right? Your route for high school, middle school is going to be the exact same route as elementary and primary because I don't want you getting lost. I don't want you forgetting kids. That's all well and good, but it's not our problem. It's not our problem. The buses should be more efficiently scheduled. And that's what happens. So you would have routes that were within acceptable tolerances for occupancy for elementary and primary, because those are the kids that largely ride the bus. That same route at the high school level, you're only planning to fill 40 seats out of 71 on the bus. That's not a good deal for the town. So we need to kick it back and see what they can do. Look, I don't know if that's a silver bullet. I don't know if it's going to help us control this cost or not, but last year was a 13.9% increase. We can't sustain that over time, so it needs to be done differently.
Are you getting any pushback with them on going the RFP style?
No, I think people have been very, you know, willing to try it because it's just, it's another way to approach it and see if it yields a different result.
Okay.
The financial model is coming along. So with that health insurance renewal, I will build it in until I have better information from somewhere else. We're assuming a BVT increase of around 9%, which is, sounds high, but it's way better than last year's 28, whatever it was. Based on our enrollment discussion that we've had with the superintendent there, we think that's, that could be ballpark. A lot's going to depend on his internal efficiencies and whether or not he's getting control of his health insurance costs. That was a prime driver of their, their base assessment growing up last year. They had a rate increase of 13.9% that were passing through to us. So capital, the first round of instructions that have gone out, went out today under Chief Vincent's signature for a capital budget. Once we get all those results in, we'll be able to start to push down the numbers through the model to get to what is basically going to be budget instructions for the expense line. My request to department heads is going to be that they hit the bottom line. If the board or FinCom want to go into greater detail about how they get to the bottom line, that's your prerogative. For my purposes, as long as the budget's balanced and they hit their bottom line budget, I trust them as professionals to configure the department's reporting.
Do we anticipate them being in line with our forecasted five-year from last year?
So right now, even with, even with the 11.8% built in, there's, you know, some good news on the other side. Remember, we did a refunding bond.
Yeah.
And there's some other things that, that will help us manage the tax burden in a way that will help us. We have other savings, so we've kind of.
Snow's been pretty good so far.
We've hit the bullet on IT, so we will be finished rolling over our relationship with Charter by the end of this month. So that's going to change that cost structure. And there might be some reorganization that we do here that will help us keep a lid on it. Year two of the five-year forecast wasn't really a bad year. We had some room to sustain some, and we had a decent certified free cash position. So there may be some things that we can do through a free cash program, one-time things that we can keep out of the operating budget. The last thing I have to announce is there was a Code Red test call made last night around 6:30. Code Red came to us when we subscribed with just about 3,571 phone contacts, a couple hundred email addresses, a couple hundred text numbers, and they all rolled out within, I believe, five minutes last night. All those calls were made. We had a 21% live connect rate. We had about 40% that were, went to voicemail. So we're pretty sure those numbers are all good. And then we had about 28% came back as operator intercept. Now, there's a number of things that, that could be a dead number. It could be.
Dead cell.
A dead cell or a phone owner declining the phone call because it was an 800 number. But we also think that there were some audio problems. I verified this. Selectman Bowden mentioned it to me this morning, that when he joined the recording, it was about halfway done.
Roughly.
So there are other calls that people received in town that were at the end of the message. So they may have had some issues on their end, so we're going to research that with Code Red. But this initial test was designed for people to realize the system is here and to get instructions on how to opt in or opt out, depending on their preferences. Suzanne's done a wonderful job. It's all on the website, step-by-step directions on what you need to do if you want emergency messages on your devices. You need to sign up, you need to share that information with Code Red. Once it goes in, we don't, we don't have access to it. That is not our website. The Code Red website that you are directed to is their database. You are entering your personal information into their database, not a town database. The other thing I want people to realize is that the number that you got on your caller ID last night, or if you did have a text message that came to you, that is the same number that will always be used. So that 1-800-566-whatever-it-was, that is Code Red's designated line for the town of Douglas for emergency messaging. So you can add it to your contacts, and it will come, it'll come up Code Red Douglas or whatever you want to call it. And that way, you know it's, it's not a junk phone call. But it's a system we're committed to, and we're pretty happy with the first, the first result. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. All right, do we have any old business? Seeing is none. Do we have any new business? Again, seeing is none. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
Second.
By Hal, seconded by Tim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.